Ryan, Walmart, a couple of stores have to lower their prices because they have such an inventory.
Yes.
That they gotta get rid.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Let me rise with the pledge, please.
Let me just have a moment of silence, please, for our first responders and military deployed.
Thank you. We're missing several council members tonight. Inga was, is out sick. Dennis is out sick. He has a fever. And Brunel's wife is, is just getting out of surgery. She had surgery this morning. So, we're a little late tonight. First up on the agenda, oh, I do wanna mention that we are being recorded and it will be on YouTube, so staying here gives consent to it being on YouTube. Public comments from visitors. Nobody has anything?
I've got a question. There is a property on East Franklin Street. The back alley, I don't know whether it's theirs or what, there's an abandoned car there. The neighbors have been complaining about going down the alley and having to cut the tree, trim the tree or tree saplings back so they don't scrape their, their paint in their car. Why hasn't somebody else that being taken care of?
Do you know what the address is?
Forty-three, forty-three East Franklin.
Do you know a name or not?
No.
So, forty-three East Franklin. We'll look into it. Thank you.
And the hills on Constitution Avenue going out. People are complaining about that.
I'm sorry, the what again?
The hill going out east, north Constitution. Once you get past East Highland Avenue. It has grown up. One gentleman said, "I think when I come to New Freedom, I ought to throw this three oh eight in the truck." He says, "I don't know if a gorilla or a lion or something's gonna come over there and attack me." And everybody's wondering too, why is that allowed to be so grown up? It looks horrible to, to go out of New Freedom and see that. That's not an, anything in our favor.
I'm not, I'm not sure exactly where.
Right across from Bostick's Old Store.
Oh, up the hill? Going up the hill?
Yeah, the hill.
Yeah, that's New Freedom by Bostick's. Where, where happened to be sign situation. No, that's not, that's a big, that's not, but you know where Bostick's used to be?
Right.
No? You can hear thirty years, you know Bostick's.
Where's the vape shop?
What's there now?
Nothing.
Nothing?
It's where the helium gets.
Is there apartments?
Yeah, it's the Summit Manor, I think it's called up there. So, I believe they own the property. I know they have a...
Is it the triangle? Triangle piece of?
Bank.
He said it's gonna be a vape shop?
Between...
Yeah, I know where you're talking.
Between Constitution.
For the company to be right across the street.
Yeah, between Constitution and the...
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, just, yeah, so it's the hill itself?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's gonna be, well, they have to own it, right? It's not ours. But, I want to know that. Okay. Yeah, we, we'll, we'll look into that too. Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Next up is approval of minutes for the council meeting during the evening night. How do we entertain a motion to review that?
Can I make a motion if we review the minutes?
It's actually accept the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, accept the minutes.
I have a recommendation. I have a change.
It has to be seconded first, amendment.
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded and now for discussion?
I think in the third line from the bottom, it says demand response calculation. I think he's referring to demand activity, and I don't want people to get confused thinking there's something new made up.
You're right, yep.
So, that, the word response can be changed to the word activity.
Yes.
Thank you.
I agree. Any other discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Those?
Call in favor with change.
With change, correct. My vote is aye with change. Okay, Treasurers' Report?
Make a motion if we approve the Treasurers' Report?
Motion to approve the Treasurers' Report? Sorry?
I was asking if it sounded really loud.
It did sound loud, yeah. Even with my hearing aids, it sounded loud.
I'll second it.
Question a second. Is there any questions? Discussion?
I'm wondering, because we do have questions, and Andrew isn't here, I don't know if anybody else can answer them. Should we table this until he comes back?
We can't, what's your question?
I got a lot of them. Goodfellow Park, I mean, there was a property lease for Comcast. All of a sudden, we're showing PayPal fees. What are the PayPal fees for? Are we accepting PayPal then? I guess I could turn this one. Are we accepting PayPal?
Yes.
Yeah, PayPal is for, when did we start doing that?
Online permit applications, things that are completed online. We accept payment through PayPal to be able to pay transactions on, since we don't have...
Well, we have to pay for the, I got to turn it down.
Yeah. It's actually paid for by the applicant.
I have a question on the Highway Aid Fund. The report before that is the Recreation Fund, and the first thing on the Highway Aid Fund is PB April. Is that pickleball in the Highway Aid Fund? For three forty-one? Three forty-one is pickleball over here for rec.
I think that's just the interest earned.
It's thirteen thirty-two, right?
Are those under Highway Aid Fund?
I'm not sure where, I'm not seeing Highway Aid Fund.
No. I don't know if PB is pickleball, but it's the same dollar amount. I mean, I'm sorry, the same account number. It's all under Highway Aid Fund?
Well, the same, same numbers and it's same refuse too, I feel like. It's just, it's just a generic interest, interest earned.
People's Bank, I bet that.
Oh, we're in People's Bank?
Probably People's Bank, 'cause it's in other accounts.
And it's a generic interest earned.
Okay, I was, I got pickleball on my mind for some reason.
Whenever we earn income from People's Bank, it's three forty-one.
Okay, that makes sense. Over on the General Fund for damage to Margie Goodfellow for twenty-two ninety-five, was that the tennis courts repair or something different?
Which page are you on?
It's the General Fund. It doesn't give me a page number. I think it's towards the end.
Oh, you're looking at expenses, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, General Fund, monthly expenses.
If you have a date or account number, maybe that's easier to track.
Four fifty-two, I guess would be the account number. Says Kinsley Damage Marley, Margie Goodfellow Recreation Expense twenty-two ninety-five.
I don't think Kinsley did anything with tennis court.
Where we got the materials to trust to do this.
Was that for the tennis courts? Have they been repaired?
Yes. I know they have, I watched them repair it. I still wanna demand, I'm sorry, I had to adjust that. These are still awfully loud. On PayPal fees, you're saying that the customer pays that?
Mm-hmm.
Wait, where does it show that coming in as revenue then? It's a minus. It's, it's, it's an expense within the revenue portion of the General Fund.
I don't know. All I can tell you is I know we do accept PayPal, but I don't know if any further questions?
But we don't accept it for utility payments.
We can't overturn if we need to, yes.
That's new. Nobody's ever said that, because people have complained that there's a three dollar per hundred charge when they pay through diversified. If they couldn't pay through PayPal, there wouldn't have been a fee, correct? That's why I would...
These are questions you're gonna have to take up.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what I'm thinking.
They're probably, it's probably a negative, because it's in the fee where you're collecting it as a revenue, and then it takes the charge out.
Okay, I'd, I'd really like to get an explanation for that and find out if people can call in here and make a payment on their utilities, water, sewer, everything else using PayPal. I mean, I know they have the ACH that they can sign up for. Remember that, folks? I know we put that on the website, but now you can do an ACH. If you fill out your form, and automatically your, your utilities will be paid when they, on the due date, so you don't have to worry about forgetting, because you got it two months prior.
So, it's on there a bunch of times. There's a PayPal fee of twenty-three dollars, right underneath it says PayPal for their building permit application fee. So, it seemed like they were, that happens a bunch of, a bunch of pairs like that. One's negative, went positive.
Yeah. All right, we'll string that up.
Okay, yeah, and then there's return check fee, I mean, a two-hundred-and-twenty-one-dollar return check fee? That's a lot for a...
If it was more than one, it could vary.
Well, that's what, I don't know if it was more than one, or if it was an error. And it's also listed under the same account for April's service fee, bank fees, water. I don't know what that is. Maybe this, I know quit books is a easy way, easier way to do it sometimes. It's not, the last thing, it can be a curse till we get the understanding of it.
Okay, well, we can table and sort of...
I have a question.
I mean, it's not like they're not gonna get paid, they're already paid.
On the, on the General Fund, the monthly expenses was the bottom of one page. I asked, I would believe, back in February or March, is, there was reference of a vehicle, and Andrew had said that there was a vehicle purchased, and they were still waiting on it to come in to take to, like, meetings or out of town things. Here, I see a vehicle purchased for seventeen seven thirty-six. So, does that have to do with that vehicle? Has it come in?
It's, it's here, yeah.
So, is that a final payment for it, or?
I think that we have to make a deposit, so I would guess that would be the final payment, 'cause it's titled and everything else.
Okay. And what type of vehicle is that?
It's a little Ford.
Escape?
Escape, yeah.
Okay.
Is it an Escape or an Explorer?
For office use.
Okay, but it was supposed to originally be something else.
Supposed to be a Chevy, but it can't go. Yeah, it can't, can't go. It didn't even start making it yet.
That's just for office employee use.
Right.
For employee.
For.
Like, somebody has to train in or something.
So, do we have to change our motion then?
Yeah, I think, make a motion to table.
I'll, I'll take back in a second, or you take back.
Procedurally, how do we do that? Just say it right?
Do you not want to approve the Treasurers' Report? In general, or what's, if you're just subject to the questions? Those monies came in and went out.
Right.
All you're doing is approving the record of the transactions.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with that.
Yeah, you don't, it's just questions that you have, that you can then ask, really you could've asked last week.
Or you can ask them next week.
Well, that's fair to do in an open meeting, though. Transparency, help them.
Well, why don't we bring up these questions at the next meeting? With next meeting's expenses? But, well...
Well, that's what we're saying.
Right, can we just do that?
It's passive, though.
I guess the question is, is do you not want to approve the transactions that have already occurred, because you have questions about them?
You can't approve them if you have questions about them.
They're already spent. They're, the transactions already occur. All it is, is a record of the report.
But you have to go back and discuss them, in case they need to be rectified. If you guys aren't sure of finalizing that you're okay with them, you need to rectify your, your questions, and, and then go back before you approve it.
The transaction has already occurred, so what you would do is, next month, you would say, "I have questions about X, Y, and Z."
But you're, you're now approving all the transactions. You're approving that all these transactions, and if you guys are disputing and questioning some of it, you need to discuss that before you approve all of them.
And it's, it's not that big of a problem. It's tabled. Move on. Thank you, though.
I'm in too many meetings.
I, I agree with you, by the way.
I'm finished business. Review of traffic study for Dickinson Court. And we've actually started the, the traffic study. It's probably going to end up... I'm sorry, I can't do this with you guys, though. You're still talking. Okay. Dickinson Court, they're going through a, a P one call's been placed to identify all utilities. The field of view occurred on June second with borough engineer, and a rough cost estimate is being developed, but it's probably gonna be somewhere in like the hundred-and-twenty-k range. So, it's probably gonna be cost prohibitive, and we're probably going to end up putting parking on one side. That's the direction I think we're probably gonna be headed.
I did hear from a neighbor, or resident of the street, who spoke with other neighbors and is not in favor of widening the street in any, any which way, either one side or the other.
Oh, okay.
So, signs, signs with parking on one side only.
It's been what we've done elsewhere in the borough. I mean, it's not an uncommon thing to do.
Yeah. There are other streets in the neighborhood that are, I think was mentioned at the previous meeting, the next street up, which I can't figure the, the name of it, is the same width.
Okay. All right, so, that's kinda tabled until we get the results back from the engineer, but that's, that's probably the direction it's gonna go. Margie Goodfellow Park improvements, which was...
Are we able to talk a little bit more about that briefly?
Sure.
Okay. I just, I did some math earlier with talking about doing single-sided parking. So, I, I took the math of an, of a average size, like full, full-size vehicle, so like a SUV or like a pickup truck. I measured a Dodge, I measured a Chevy, I measured a Ford, both like Tados, Suburbans, and my personal pickup truck and a Dodge Ram. So, with the mirrors extended, like, not extended, but like out, they're between a hundred and one and a hundred and five inches. So, that's like eight point seven five feet. So, if you were, you guys said your, your parking along the curb is between twelve inches. So, if you add twelve inches to that, nine point seven five feet. So, that, that takes, so the road where I measured in multiple spots, it's between twenty-two and twenty-four feet wide, curb to curb. So, if you were to add eight point seven five plus that one foot, when, you know, parking, that's nine point seven five, and then if you add another eight point seven five for a car, and then add another eight point seven five, and then add a one-foot buffer, meaning six inches from that car, six inches between passing, you're at twenty-eight point two five feet. So, I don't see how single-sided parking is gonna be okay, because for about a week after this meeting, we moved our truck off the road, and for about a week after the meeting, the parking was, was decent, and then where we have a CRB parked on the road, and there's a pickup truck across, and they just kinda park wherever, and it, it's, it's, if you, if you take a measurement between them, even though they're not completely across from each other, there's, I don't see that there's any way, if, if one side of that road is lined with cars, you could safely pass two vehicles. I don't know if your guys' thoughts on that. You guys live on the same road, but I, I don't see how it's possible, 'cause I came home at four-thirty on Sunday and, and drove down, and we had a trailer in the back of a vehicle. And, and at four-thirty in the morning, we drove down where there's a Cintas van, and I guess the people across the street had their driveway or something done. There's a Jetta parked across from it. And with them parked completely across from each other, it is, it is very, very tight. And my concern is, is if you were to look into single-sided parking, I, I don't, I don't see there's any way that people can safely pass each other while the cars are parked on that side.
Well, I, I tend to agree with you. I still think you're gonna end up, I mean, on Constitution, we have parking on both sides of the road, but nobody can drive straight down Constitution. You have to stop two or three times and pull over, and people pass each other. I mean, that's just, that's just the way it is. Same thing with your road. I mean, I think even if we make one-sided parking, I think the trash truck will be able to get through. I think that the school buses will be able to get through, but I don't think that you're ever going to have like two cars zipping off and pass each other. That's, I, I think someone's gonna have to pull over and, and give it right away. That's just the way it's gonna be.
You don't have that many cars going on that much.
Can we get name, can we get names and addresses before we speak, for the record?
My name's Nick. I'm at seven Dickinson Court. So, and then one other thing I just wanted to address too, about driving on, on our road. At ten Dickinson Court, there's, there's, I thought I could get it to you. There's branches that are nine feet out in the road, and, so the road's only twenty-two feet there, and they're nine feet out, and you have an idea of the road, they're sixty-five inches off the road, and an SUV seventy-seven inches tall. And I was told that it's because they're out into the road, even though they're on some property, that it's your guys' responsibility to...
What, is it way fourteen feet in, over the road surface? Has to be...
Yeah, yeah, if you want us to... Yeah, it's, it's, they're, they're sixty-five inches, sixty-six inches, and then they're nine feet out in the road, and then...
Water is...
Vehicle's seventy-seven inches tall, so, and it's, there's the address there. Every time we drive down, someone...
It's what, nine feet over the sidewalk? It sounds, though, like, like you're kind of agreeing, right? I mean, you pretty much have to have parking one side only if you expect to get emergency vehicles, trash trucks, school buses.
No, I mean, no, I mean, they come through, a, a emergency vehicle comes through there, you know, every, every Christmas with a ladder truck, and it's got through the road, without anybody moving vehicles, so...
We lost, we lost mirrors on school buses, and the trash truck refused to go down through one day.
Yeah, the mirror that was lost was a, was a truck parked giving a, given a, two feet off the road, giving, giving mail to us, I found out. And it didn't knock the mirror, it actually pulled the mirror back. So, when I traced back to where it was, it was actually at my house, and mail was given to the wrong, the wrong house. So, the, the truck was just stopped real quick, walked up and gave us, 'cause I had no idea whose mirror got hit. No one in the neighborhood knew whose mirrors got hit. Come to find out, it was a guy three, three streets up that dropped a, dropped a package off our house.
So, we go back, you said that the vehicles were how, how wide?
It's, go to the second page there. I'll write it down for you.
These are widths?
Yes.
So, I mean, see, that's what I'm saying. If you have, if nine point seven five is the, is the width, and you park on both sides of the road, you've just taken up the whole road.
Oh, yeah.
That's eighteen feet.
Yeah.
Nineteen feet.
Yep.
So, the road's only, what, twenty feet wide?
Twenty, twenty, it depends where it's at. It's, the average, the average...
Twenty-two feet, but when I measured it, it was like nineteen to twenty.
It depends on, on how far up on the curb you measure, you know, and, and depending on where on the court, but it's anywhere as narrow as nineteen and as wide as twenty-four feet.
Okay. I appreciate your input. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I don't think it's twenty-decency, you know. You don't get that much, one-sided parking won't hurt anybody, you have to worry about that. You don't get traffic, that's a call sign. The traffic up and down there is very little. So, you have to worry about people passing each other on the downed street, like you would on a main road here.
Well, we do have to worry about emergency vehicles, about trash trucks, about our, our public works being able to plow. Those plows are, are wide, you know, it's...
But the streets wide, if you put one-sided parking, it's wide enough.
You're saying if you use the one-sided parking?
Yeah, oh, yeah. The one-sided parking, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think we're all agreeing, basically. But I, yeah, I appreciate the input, but I, I really do think we're all agreeing. I think that's the way we probably should head. I, I think you're probably right too, Ryan, that I don't think people really want their yards cut up and to lose four feet off the front of their yard, so, just, you know, to add a little bit to the road. So, I, I...
I'm very sidewalk.
Did you have something?
I'm just gonna say that I don't think the rest of the residents in New Freedom wanna all pay a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to widen the street.
That too. Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
I'm Chris. I live at twenty-two Dickinson Court. Did you decide which side of the road people will have to park on?
We'll probably let the traffic engineer decide that, but I think right now, what we're looking at is there's a cross street that comes in, and it would be the opposite side to the cross street.
Wilson Evans.
Wilson comes in, right, so the opposite, Wilson?
I got a question. So, I mean, these streets look like about the same size.
Again, please name and address before you speak.
Chris Gavre, twenty-three, John Ranoff. So, the streets look about the same all around, 'cause it's like my neighborhood on here. Are we looking to do that everywhere?
No, your street is not the same width. It was developed, your development is newer, and the, the street width is like, I think your street, your street width is probably to the center is what, twenty...
Oh, no, it's okay. I was just asking, it just looks like...
Yeah, no, it's not gonna be everywhere. Only where we have problems.
Thank you.
Nick with a second take, Sam. How will this affect mailboxes, trash recycling?
Probably the mailboxes will be on one side of the road, but I think, I think that's what they do on Washington.
Yeah, there's also a couple of streets in Kohler Point that have that, and that road is regular width. So, why they all ended up on one side, I don't know, but...
Now, what, what about trash and recycling? Would, would that still be same side, or put it across the street, or? Not that it really matters, it'd just be nice if we...
Yeah, and Kohler Point, what everybody does, and there's a number of people that do park on both sides, but they keep their, their trash and recycling at the end of their driveway.
Okay. Well, that's actually, yeah, that would be a good point.
Which that could be a problem, though, if you're parking on one side, that might be a problem.
They'll, they'll be able to weave in, into the opening of the driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they should be fine. Anything else?
If you could just do something about those streets, how would be your, the branches? Tire scratching the truck.
Okay, cool. Okay. Um, Margie Goodfellow Park, Andy wants, would like that to still stay tabled. The idea here is that the grant funding that's available from DCNR to develop Margie Goodfellow Park would require a master site development plan, so having the site development plan would get us more grant money to be able to do more things in the park. So, I think what we're leaning towards is doing the site plan.
driveway.
Okay.
Well, that's actually, yeah, that would be a good point.
Which that could be a problem, though, if you're parking on one side, that might be a problem.
They'll they'll be able to weave in into the opening of the driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they should be fine. Anything else?
If you could just do something about those streets, how would be your eight uh branches? Tire scratching truck.
Okay, cool. Um, March Goodfellow Park, Andy wants would like that to still stay tabled. The idea here is that uh the grant funding that's available from DCNR to develop uh March Goodfellow Park would require a master site development plan. So having the site development plan would get us more grant money to be able to do more things in the park. So I think what we're leaning towards is doing the site plan. If it's okay with everybody.
Yeah, I think it'll help to tie everything in together instead of doing things piecemeal, a little bit here, a little bit there. And instead of coming back several times, we can get a lot done or hopefully get a lot done at once.
Right? Okay. Uh, Southern Regional Police Department, third amended intergovernmental agreement. Let me say this about that. We're uh right now, Glen Rock has basically said that they're not going to approve the intergovernmental agreement. So what that does to us is it basically tables it until they we come up with either a version that they like or they come up with what they're going to do long-term with the police commission. So right now, we have an ordinance that we talked about where we were approving the intergovernmental agreement, and I would recommend we table that until we hear back from the police commission with the change new changes that they're making and also with what Glen Rock's proposal is.
Do we have any kind of updated timeline on Glen Rock? Because that could then, if they keep kicking the can down the road, so to speak.
Well, if they're gonna do anything, they have to do it by according to the current IGA by October.
October, yeah.
After October, they've gotta wait another full year and they can't really pull out for till the end of twenty-twenty-three.
So they have to decide by October, but then we have to figure out the verbiage of everything. And then any back and forth between any of the other municipalities, is that gonna be enough time for a proper vote on the information?
Their meeting is next Wednesday.
What?
Or actually, this Wednesday. Next Tuesday is the IGA at six P M. here. And then um after that will be the continuation of the police commission. So hopefully it'll be some progress this month, there's some progress with it.
Glen Rock just turned everything over to their safety committee, so and that I think they have what, one or two council members on the safety committee, is it Roland on? Yeah, so.
John.
Yeah, so hopefully that hopefully it'll head in the right direction and we'll be able to figure out what's going on. But there's really nothing this council can do to expedite that.
I suspect they don't like the if you threaten to get out and you withdraw that, withdraw. You can't do it for yet for five more years.
That was one of them.
Yeah, I mean, there there are several things in there that um that they that they didn't like, but I their biggest problem, they're coming to us not as an adversary, they're coming to us as a partner, which I appreciate. I think, don't you think that they've done that? And I think they're coming to us saying, you know, really, we're trying to control our costs. We really, we really want SRPD. We just are trying to figure out a way to afford them. So I think they're coming as friends. In previous years, they're maybe not so much, but this year I think they are, so I'm I'm hopeful.
And we'll we'll see if the IGA committee can come to terms with something else, either purchasing hours or um having a different subtext of what they are. What did we call that?
Associate.
An associate membership.
Contractor.
And a or a contracted subscriber. If they come to us and say, look, we've only got three hundred thousand dollars to spend, chief's gonna have to come up with a figure. This is what you're gonna get for three hundred thousand dollars. If you run out of time at the end of November, you're gonna have to use the state police. And if they're willing to do that, hopefully they won't. But, you know, we're we're trying to work with with them. We want everybody to work together. They're very well pleased with Southern Regional. They're just not pleased with what it costs. But then again, I don't think any of us are pleased with what everything's costing us today. Looked at the stock market, you know, and we've got some problems.
I think it just remains stable. We didn't reopen the motions and we're.
So hopefully hopefully IGA will be able to put something else in there that'll that'll.
Okay, but again, you know, we're we're not gonna take any action tonight. Community yard sale. We had talked about community yard sale and I I thought that we had said that the um that the Lions Club was doing a yard sale, so did we really wanna have a community yard sale? But if that's not the case, that's fine, but.
When is the when is theirs?
I forget.
The Lions, is that like September or it could have been August? I don't know. We were thinking kind of August the sixth to do a community yard sale at no fee.
So you still wanna do the community yard sale?
Probably the latest year, I think. Last one this year, it's nice that they can can do that.
Okay, so the date you want to be August sixth?
If we could, yes, I think.
And is is there going to be a fee charged at all or is it gonna be for instance, zero fee?
We'll not go against their two.
Right, and not against the two year.
But they do have to come in and say they're gonna do it.
Yes.
They do have to register, pre-graduate, address.
They need the permit, right?
We will also, according to Andrew, he'll develop a list so that we can put on the website of everybody that's happened.
Yeah, and that'll be great.
And the time?
Uh, it should be from nine to two. What's a good yard sale time?
Yard sale shoppers are early. They're capping their foot.
Eight to eight to two? Eight to two, you better. Eight to two. Okay, so it sounds like we need a motion to have a community art yard sale on August sixth at no cost and it will not account against the two allowed per year. They do need to register with the borough office and and there's an advantage to registering with the borough office, because we'll put it on the website.
We're sure about the date?
That's what.
Okay.
I asked some people and they think that would be a good time.
Okay, I was gonna say, we're gonna just say it to be the same date as the the Lions Club yard sale, instead of calling out a date.
It's not gonna be the same date as the Lions Club yard sale. It's gonna be a different date.
Oh, different.
Right.
I'm sorry.
The Lions Club actually is charging for spaces in March Goodfellow Park.
So they're coming, they're doing that again now. They're gonna, they haven't done it in a couple of years, right?
Right.
Yeah, well, they could, because COVID.
I mean, does it make, I mean, I see where you're getting, does it make sense to have everything at the same day anyway? Would that make sense?
No.
Now, they're trying to raise.
Just trying to compete them.
Right.
Because you're gonna have some people that no matter what, they're not gonna, they don't have trucks to load stuff and take it down to March Goodfellow Park. They're gonna put it out in the garage and it gives them an opportunity to be able to get rid of some things at their house that they can't just load up and take down to March Goodfellow.
Anyway, wanna make a motion about what I just said?
Make a motion to have that community yard sale on August sixth, eight eight to two P M.
August sixth, eight to two, right?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Okay, next item is the approval for payment number three in the amount of fifty-four thousand three hundred and two dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, this is where the Public Works renovation project and they've completed all their punch lists. I think there is still a. Yeah, the completion walk-through is next week, right? Yeah.
Is this the final payment?
No, I think there is a retention.
There's one more after this?
Yeah, but it's just a small retention. Hold on, I can find it.
It's balanced to completion, seventy, seventy-seven, that's what.
Three minutes, let's. Yeah, so the retention is fifty-two thousand, one ninety-one. Should be five cents. So I would need a motion to make that payment.
So moved.
Okay, Ryan is first.
I'm second.
Dave seconds. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Okay, then we have an application for payment for street projects. It's the includes the fifty-eight thousand, nine fifty-two thirteen deduction for material not needed. So there was a base repair and that's being credited back to us. And there's also sixty K in escrow. The punch list is completed and probably next month we'll we'll vote, we'll have a motion to pay the retained part, but the punch list is not yet completed. So there is a retention on that.
Was this specifically from Constitution? Were you paving there?
No, this is for.
From their regular paving?
There's multiple multiple locations, um.
Dunker Hill.
Yeah, I see. They're called many quarters. This is their regular items.
So the portion that we're paying is the fifty-eight thousand, nine fifty-two thirteen. I'm sorry.
The five fifty-two, fifty-two, seventy-four, eighty-seven.
Yeah, it's five fifty-two, yeah, my god, five fifty-two, six seventy-four, eighty-seven.
I don't know if we pay that.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Okay, we have a zoning hearing board appointee. And we have a resolution with no number, um, but there was only one person who applied. He was interviewed and seems like uh like uh he's well-versed and he's actually willing to take the training courses for zoning. So he seems like a good replacement for uh the people, the person who resigned. So I think you have the resolution in your packet.
So he was interviewed by members of the board or by?
He was interviewed by Andy and I think Wade, who else saw somebody else? Just Andy?
Make a motion. Discuss.
All right. And will we approve their resolution to approve Stephen DeBulius?
Well, we see. And you also, so we have two firsts, kind of. So we have a first and a second. Any discussion? And this actually is just a term through the end of the year, but we can extend it to, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Okay, uh, water system report. Get out of sequence. I did get out of sequence there. Okay, administrator report, solicitor?
Uh, been a quiet month. Sorry, now I do report.
Quiet is good.
Did you make any progress on the ordinance for fire pits?
We, I looked at a couple there, Manny, with him being off, I just wait till the next one.
Okay, and I I think I forward to.
Andy sent me one as well.
From a different municipality?
Yes.
Manager report? Me, you, doesn't matter, okay. Um, DCNR peer study um is in is in progress. Actually, Andy's meet going to meet with Todd to review a draft intergovernmental agreement and municipal agreement, uh, because we'll be sharing the uh the RAC director with Shrewsbury Andy recertified on the playground inspections. We already talked about the public works renovation.
Did the Rail Trail Towns Business Group meeting occur?
I believe it did. I did not go.
Don't you remember that?
I am, but I never heard about it, so I didn't.
I never heard about it either.
Yeah.
I mean, because there are more businesses that are jumping onto that, so it's got some momentum to it.
Yeah, no, I know that um, I think Kate Clunk was there, I think Christian Phillips Hill was there.
Okay.
It wasn't sponsored by us, but yeah.
But it's sponsored by?
We should have been there.
By Gonzales, Dave Gonzalez, right, the guy from York County?
Sorry.
I assume Dave Gonzalez is the guy that put it on, like he always does. Okay. And I can reach back out to him to make sure that we're invited the next time.
Yeah, because I've I've emailed him several times that we would certainly like to know when there are events like this taking place in in town.
Yeah. There's a lot of money moving around with that. I mean, they're they're waving out the grants and stuff like that.
It is, yeah.
Dave, you might you might check with him. I got the notification, I attended some of the events over here, so maybe your name just fell out the email list.
Well, I just peek a lot at the last minute, that could be why.
That's what teach you. Uh, twenty twenty-three budget is coming up and um Andy this year is asking for staff counsel and um and other people to have input for the budget cycle. So he's actually given us a form, it's a budget request form. And um, like Brian, Brian, if you could pay particular attention to RAC.
Take the note right now.
Yeah, make sure that they get any input in that they need. I think we should take advantage of this and get a jump on what we want in the budget for next year. And the crosswalk improvements are are all done, so they're not done, but they're.
Did we get grants for that? Because there were supposedly grants available.
Yeah, we did get grant, part of part of it's covered by grants.
Because I know Christian Phillips Hill was involved in that and was supposed to.
President's report, um, Ann went to another EMS meeting, Kim could chime in, but the the biggest thing I think is that I think everyone is starting to become more pro-merger. You say that, Strip? And um, so we're looking at a possible a possible merger and funding for the First Capital, which is not what we're gonna be, but funding for that for them, they have subscriptions which cost thirty-five dollars per person or fifty dollars per household. And what that does is it it does it does a lot more than what we currently have. Right now, I think basically our our ambulance subscription uh covers half. Is that about right? I think it's half.
They were talking about changing it to thirty-five percent.
Yeah, so not not a lot. Not all of it. So they have fifteen thousand subscribers and the benefit to the subscribers is whenever the bill is submitted to the insurance company and there's a guarantee, the ambulance will accept what the insurance company pays excluding deductibles and co-payments. So in other words, if I have a deductible that I have to meet, I have to pay that, if I have a co-payment, I have to pay twenty-five dollars, or if I'm not admitted, fifty dollars or fifty dollars if I'm admitted, twenty-five if not, or whatever, I got that backwards, but um, then they will accept that. So it's really a huge advantage, I think. Uh, then they also get municipal donations from municipalities, sometimes sometimes just a straight donation, sometimes there's an EMS tax. And then they actively solicit donations from all the businesses in the area. So I think that that's very promising, that they're that we're looking at merger and they're willing to consider mergers, because we are headed towards having to, well, we used to have free EMS or volunteer EMS is what we had. Now we have paid EMS, so things are headed in that direction. Right now, we have a huge benefit because we have a volunteer fire company and if that ever became paid, you would see an additional tax burden. So meetings like this are very important.
And the merger would be between?
Uh, Jacobus, Glen Rock, Shrewsbury Township, New Freedom, the wars. They don't have, yeah, the intergovernmental agreement would be through all those, but there are some, like, for instance, Shrewsbury Township actually doesn't have their own EMS. They use Rose or Glen. like for instance, Shrewsbury Township actually doesn't have their own EMS, they use Rose or Glen Rock. But the actual companies that would be merging would be. Tri, is that Tri? Tri, Tri Community, Tri Community, Jacobus, Glen Rock, and Rose would be the mergers. And also, it's not a closed merger, which is interesting too. So if somebody else came along and wanted to join, they could. So there, you know, it could grow, it's not a closed, you know, this is the only people we're going to have. It's very encouraging.
So did you say, if I'm not sure what you say, why the insurance thing gets taken care of and how the insurance money goes back to EMS?
Well, the other thing too, which is interesting, but the the insurance itself, they don't they don't carry huge sums on the books that people are in arrears. They pretty much, if they if they get a bill in and they bill for twelve hundred dollars and the bill comes back and they get four hundred dollars, they write it off and move on. So it's a different philosophy. I mean, we're carrying seven hundred thousand dollars on the books as a as a debt, a debt, you know, a debt and probably, you know, it looks artificial. I don't think, remember we were talking about the the chunks of money? Well, I think that's an artificial seven hundred K. It is, that's. Probably never going to get that. That's if they could bill out the the exact amount, that is what would be owed, but because of Medicare, Medicaid, they're not allowed to receive additional funds. They have to accept what Medicare and Medicaid pays. Medicaid doesn't even cover the cost of a trip to the ambulance. Medicare and Medicaid also does not pay for for drugs. They're trying to get their their drugs, their their costs down. They used to get go through Minix, now they're looking at two other companies and I've advised them to try to go maybe with a Co-Stars because there are Co-Stars companies that that are available and they're they can go through Co-Stars. So they're they're really trying to help themselves, but they're all, they also need to, and I don't want to correct you, but I think certain things, they keep on the books for a year. Once they're on for a year, it then it goes to collection. It originates through their billing company and then after, I think, a year, it goes to collection. Good luck. And by the time collection, if they do collect it, their percentage, you're left with not a whole lot. Yeah. So we're looking at changing some of that collection, hopefully. And the last meeting that was supposed to take place was canceled and I think the next one is what, the twenty eighth? Twenty eighth? Yeah. Actually, the next meeting, we'll get to meet the D C E D person, that'll be by Zoom, but we'll get to meet them. So, why don't you just launch into your mayor's report then, sir? Sure. I attended the convention at Hershey, the P S A B convention, it was more than quite informative. I hope that each of you in the future might take the opportunity to to go to to go to that, even if you can go one day. It was real tough because sometimes they had two two things going on at the same time. Fortunately, I went with the mayor of of Stewartstown, Brittany Barnett, and we would split up seminars and then get together afterward and compare notes because I'd miss one, she'd miss one. We did have the opportunity to go to the Capitol and spend the afternoon with Kristen Phillips Hill and her her entourage, they were very, very accommodating. One of the things I think we talked about too with EMS was being able to get with other insurance companies. What's happening is insurance companies are issuing checks directly to the patient. That patient's just putting it in the bank and not sending it in to the ambulance. Kristen is working on a bill that would require companies like Capital, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and some of the other ones to pay directly to the EMS provider of record and not to the patient. Because what happens is we find out that there's a patient that got a thousand dollar check, they spend it. All we can do is then take them to district magistrate, which nobody wants to have to do. They're owed money, you get money, you pay it back. It's it's pretty much that simple. And sometimes people just don't even realize they get a check from the insurance company, they don't know what it's for, they put it in the bank. That was, Kristen's trying to help us on that. I I got some other complaints on Logan for the speed. I would ask the council to help me to help them. I've talked to Brian Swites over at Shrewsbury, he said that we can use their excess speed bumps that they're not using on Logan to try to slow it down. He recommends that what we do first is use the police unit radar, see what the speeds are, if it would require us to do speed bumps and then do it again while the speed bumps are up. It'll probably only be three speed bumps going up Logan. That's tending to be a shortcut from basically from eight fifty-one up to eight fifty-one. Instead of going to Rutter's and going up Main Street, they're they're taking Logan. And that's a big problem, especially in the mornings and in the evenings. And as you all know from previous council meetings, I've said we have a major problem with buses and people not adhering to red bus stops. We've had several children that have just about been hit. We've had a lot of bus drivers that are completely frustrated. They're looking at putting new cameras in the buses for next year. The the fines are big, you can lose your license, five points. I mean, it could be jail, it'd be jail time if you hit a kid. It's just gotten to be, I think we had a hundred and seventy-some red stops violations since December till the end of the year. So we've we've got to control that, the police can't be at every bus stop. This might help with that. I just, I'd like to try it to see how that works. Shrewsbury was very successful in doing it. What's, what's the, you go up Old Farm and make a left. They were very successful trying that out there first and then putting permanent speed humps, not the bumps, not the big ones, but they're smaller ones that you can still go at twenty, twenty-five miles an hour, you know, and not worry about damaging your car, and the snow piles can go over that. His recommendation is that we try it for two to three months and then take that down prior to drop, prior to winter. There's a gentleman that's coming in from one of the vendors that I met at the convention. I want to set that up with Andrew, myself, and Brian because we also, I think, need to get some speed signs. Andrew brought it up before, but the flashing signs that say speed limit, you're going, slow down. If Shrewsbury is buying two, no matter what we do, I want to look and see if we buy four or possibly get Stewartstown involved, each municipality buys two, what we can bring that price down to. Because I think the the more we buy, the cheaper it's going to be. I think we've got to be very aware of the safety of our of our citizens at this point for that.
They're only about five K apiece.
They're they're twenty-eight hundred apiece.
Yeah, so five K.
From this company, the same thing is twenty-eight hundred dollars apiece. So for two of them, it's about five thousand.
I just had a question about the the speed through these courts and all, is there standardized speed like like that should be regulated?
It's twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Because I've never seen a posted speed, I don't know what it is, and you see some people like even in our court that are doing fifty miles an hour.
You don't have, you don't have speed, speed limit signs?
No, not a single one.
On Schaefer, seeing a lot of cars zooming through?
That's another problem, I've gotten many complaints on Schaefer.
Yes.
We've had some complaints, some older folks that were trying to cross the road, one person almost got hit. I think there was an accident there on that on the one corner. I'd probably get monthly a somebody complaining about that. So that would be another spot that once we put, if we use speed bumps up there, they can come down, we can use them up on Schaefer. But there, I think there are, Wade, aren't there speed limit signs on all the streets?
There's there's speed limits on Schaefer, I think it's thirty-five, I think thirty, thirty-five, I'll hand.
I think it's thirty, okay.
Thirty, okay, I'm sorry. But the suggestion I would have is have the police department, you know, maybe sit on the streets every once in a while. I see them, I see them radaring over by the cemetery.
There's a bid on radar.
Well, they can do, use radar.
Yeah. But sit, you know, like, I don't know if they're on a coffee break or something, maybe they'll sit on some of these streets.
They're doing paperwork, but they're using that as a people don't know that whether they have radar, they're looking for speeders or what they may be doing, that's some paperwork. It's it's, it keeps traffic flow to a normal, as soon as you see a police car, have it slow down. So they do that, they do that there, they do that out by Weathersfield, the drive that goes up to Weathersfield, sometimes.
They used to use, I'm not sure of the name, but I think it's called VASCAR, it's basically timing between point, point, they used to do that here in.
Which one of them can't they use anymore? There's two, LiDAR, there's LiDAR and there's, yeah, there's so many different ones, but there is a bill in the House, a big movement for local police to be able to use radar. We're thinking, quote, again, Kristen Phillips Hill was really pushing this for for us in our police department. We're hoping that it passes, it's gone through the Senate, it's just depends on what the House does. So hopefully, if you see that in the paper, call your representatives and let them know that that's what you, that's what you want. But anytime, if you get an area that you think is a problem area, we have, we do have radar. We can't use it to enforce speeds, but we can set it up, you can't see it. We can set it up so that you can do a traffic count for every hour, twenty-four hours, and you can see every hour what the speed was, the number of cars that went through, high speed, low speed, average speed for an entire week. And what they generally do is they have it facing one direction one week, the other direction another week, and that quantifies whether something really needs to be done on that street. I know they put it on Constitution because we had several complaints and believe it or not, the average speed, if you average it out, the average speed was twenty-seven miles an hour. And I think that's what, twenty-five mile an hour, is that thirty mile? I don't know, this is a constant street, thirty-five. I think it's thirty-five, but the average speed was twenty-seven. So we were all surprised that it wasn't higher than that. Of course, we had one that was sixty-five and we had another one that was ten miles an hour, but that's. And that's a good thing too for the signs that I'd like to look at. They do all that in addition to the flashing lights, they tell you to slow down, all that.
Just talk about all the the speed limits and all, it it may be beneficial on a couple of of these courts that like we don't have a speed limit sign that halfway on the court that if a sign was put up. It seems like people at the the furthest end of the court, they forget as they start driving up the court that like, you know, it's not, it's, their their house is further away from the main road and by the time they get about halfway, and we don't have children, but our neighbors, they have kids, you know, they're right along the road plan and, you know, it's, there's a couple of cars going forty, fifty miles an hour up the lane and we have friends that have said about their their quarter up the road too, so that's why I asked if there's a standardized speed, so.
I think there is, but I don't remember, is it twenty-five? Twenty-five miles an hour residential streets. Yeah, okay.
Is that, is that something that's up for discussion, putting a sign on?
My question is, I thought we had to have a speed limit sign on every street after an intersection.
I think that's a a pen dot, it's twenty-five miles an hour. I mean, if you want to ticket people, you have to have a.
Yeah, it has to be, but I thought there, I thought it had to be posted on every street within so many feet of an intersection. I thought I remember something like that when we were putting signs up in Coral Point.
Yeah, we could, we could look, certainly look. Mr. Solicitor, you know, are you aware of what that is?
The the rule's always, you're supposed to have one every eighth of a mile to be enforceable on a highway. So I, if there's a specific requirement, I'm not aware of it. Typically, when when developments are built, we have the developer put their sign in and we post them. They they post them and then we put up the ordinance and that's enforceable. So I don't know if this is an order of development that hasn't been had a sign, I'd be surprised, but.
Let us look into that, we'll see what the statute says.
Just how the the kids that are playing in the yard, it'd be nice if there's just even one sign, if people knew this, you know? New people move in, I don't think they even realize what the street's supposed to be.
Yeah, it's a safety issue. Let me, let me check the statute on that, chief should know that.
Yeah.
And and I'll let him know, you know, maybe they can just go up there and sit and do some paperwork a day or two, a month, and that sometimes can curtail.
I think more people just don't even, like, I didn't know. I'm aware they're.
Well, you're right, if there's no, if there's no sign, you really don't know. It's, and I'm, this is going to, this is part of my mayor's report too. COVID point. We, apparently, nobody wants to put yellow, paint yellow lines, but I found out at the convention that it doesn't matter whether there's yellow lines or not. There is a statute that says you cannot park within thirty feet, I think, of a stop sign. So whether there's a yellow line or not, you can, and the police can issue a citation. So chief and I are going to have a discussion about that because we're having a serious problem. You asked me about it, I I did look into it and I asked that specific question. There is a an attorney for.
But you and I both said that and and they, and they said they didn't want to have to measure it, they really just pace it off.
Yeah, it's not.
I mean, it's it's not like a.
I mean, if it's if it's five feet from the stop sign, you know it's not thirty.
Right.
You know, it's not.
And if it's, I mean, if it's twenty-six, you shouldn't write a ticket anyway, so.
You're right.
You know, if it's, as long as it's some.
We are going to be having a discussion about that. If anybody else has any problems, situations, look, send me an email, you know? My email address, I think, is posted on the website. Send, send me problems that you're having, we'll bring it up, talk about it and find you the answer, hopefully.
I had a quick question for the school bus, who's who's driving fixing the school bus problem? Is that them, the police are doing it or that?
That is something, well, police are trying to help as much as they can when they really know that there's a problem spot. All it takes is them sitting there for a couple of days and people slow down. They have caught twenty-seven people.
I just say, is it really, is it really that prevalent? Because I go to some reconvention appeal court and there's probably a dozen of those every time I go.
We've had twenty-seven in South Carolina.
I'd be surprised if they're not prosecuting them because the bus drivers in the schools are very aggressive in prosecuting them.
They are, they are investing in better cameras, newer cameras, the cameras they have now really can't capture license plate numbers. The new cameras that they're they're getting will capture license plate numbers and they will rotate those cameras through buses. They can't put one on every bus right now, it just, it's cost prohibitive. So the school district and the bus company together are going to be integrating those cameras in. those cameras in certain school buses. Nobody's gonna know where they are, which bus it is, and we're really gonna hit this, I think, hot and heavy. All the municipalities, all the mayors are very concerned about this before school starts up in the fall. We're, we're gonna make sure people are aware, but.
You can put a bigger pole, the pole that comes out when they stop. Nobody needs to see that.
That's the pole.
Make a louder one.
Yeah, unfortunately.
I just have a comment. John Argo Dick in the court. You can put all this, I, I agree, a speed limit sign on our street is a good idea. But you can put all the signs you want, and you drive around this area. People are supposed to be so intelligent, they can't read stop signs or speed limit signs. I go through streets very morning, goes to twenty-five, and as people ride in your bumper, they want to go ninety right through that.
It's called common sense, and people don't seem to have it anymore. I know. I've got a couple of kids that I'm gonna be talking to Chief about the alley down here when they're done playing basketball. I know that one kid is going fifty miles an hour down this alley, and there are two little kids coming down the other alley, and on bikes and what have you, and parents that are walking, you know, down to the park, and it's just a matter of time. So, you know, we've, we've got a, you know, if, if you see something, say something. Get a, get a license plate number. Don't, you know, report it. You can do it anonymously. You know, they may not be able to arrest them, but if you gotta knock on your door and say, hey, we got a report that your kid here, this license plate number was, was speeding excessively. You might want to have chat with him. Eh, sometimes worked. I know it did for me.
I just want to comment on that gentleman about the police in the cemetery. A few years ago, and I used to leave for work at five o'clock in the morning. They used to sit in the cemetery, and they had a speed trap there on the right.
That's, that's, yeah, that's what I was talking about earlier. They used to have it set up.
And they do from time to time.
Five o'clock in the morning. They were there, we always knew what, nothing expected. We always watched for them.
Yeah, one of the problems is. One of the problems is getting to be, we have twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, two officers at a time. It takes two officers to operate one of them, and sometimes, you know, it's a stopwatch. Wait, our one officer with a stopwatch, you got another one that's a chase vehicle. If they're there for an hour, two hours, that's four other municipalities that don't have police coverage. They can't be every place at one time, and I, I wish it could be different. And that's where I think radar might help, and doing these studies, I think, also helps. I, I made a motion to the police commission to purchase another one of the radar units. We're now up to three. Shrewsbury is definitely gonna buy the, the signs, no matter what we do. So there's three more in the area, so that's a total of five, that we can get all that information. I, I've gotten quite a few complaints too, and I don't know what council might want to do about this. I think it's very important that we do something immediately. The ambulance and the fire trucks pull out of the firehouse, or they're trying to back those ladder trucks and the big units back in. There's no lights anywhere on the street that flash or say, let people know that the fire truck is completely across the road. We need to be able to put something up there. I'm sure it's, they're out there. The gentleman's coming in on the twentieth. I'm sure he has access to all kinds of signage. I think it would be nice, what do they do? Is anybody familiar? Is it a remote control thing? Whenever the door goes up, the light goes on in the street. I've seen it other places.
I think it's probably something.
Hit the truck. I would like council to let me look into that when he comes to town.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we're really having a problem. There have been some very, very close calls. I mean, people slamming on their brakes. Luckily, there's trees on it. Yeah, it is, coming up that hill and around the curve. So I, I want to look into that. That's, that's a bit on my head.
In the time being, in the time being, is it, can they not leave their lights on while they're doing that?
I think they do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you still have, I mean, most, most, when you're in the residential areas, you know, something like that, on a curb.
Yeah.
Most fire companies and, and, not so much EMS, but the fire companies have lights somewhere.
Oh, absolutely, I agree, but I'm just saying, in the time being, a couple of weeks ago, I came up there, and, and they didn't even have the lights on, on the, on the truck, I mean.
Were they were backing in or coming in?
They were backing in. They had the thing on the road. In the time being, until you have something like that, it just.
Oh, yeah, they not letting out their lights.
I will, I will relay that. That's a good point. I, I, I don't, maybe I didn't. I am going to every fire and EMS meeting at the, at the company.
Yeah, and you're excited to have.
Well, that's true.
They could have an officer just go down and.
And stop and slow people down either way.
The problem is, they're lucky if they have enough people to.
Run the truck.
To run the truck, let alone run somebody down the hill.
Lights aren't available. I like.
I, I, you know, when they're pulling out.
Did you have a case?
Um, I think, while Dennis had a question, I'll, I'll go ahead and relay that to him. He had a question on one of the report items. It wasn't out of jurisdiction, but it was. Let me look at it real quick, because you, the rest of you don't want to know, and I can go over it.
I think you could just get back to Dennis on that. I don't have time.
No, I'm looking at Glen Rock, I'm sorry. Here it is. Service calls assist other police. Okay, he had a question on that. What that is, we may get a call from Baltimore County saying, hey, we had a robbery down here. We want you to take a look at, you know, for this vehicle. Well, if they stop them in New Freedom, that is what that is. That's a service call assisting another police department. They could be coming from Hanover, this area, you know, Glen Rock. But if they stop them here, or warrant from someplace else, that's what it goes under. And that was a question that he had.
Well, there's other, but like if there was a domestic violence in Maryland, and the person lives in New Freedom, that's when it would get charged, New Freedom, when it is a residence. But then there's other times where there might be a large accident on eighty-three. They get called out there. That goes into the assist other. It doesn't get tagged to any one of us. It just goes to the other. But only, it comes to us when the person is a New Freedom resident. And also, Chief gave a report on the counterfeit twenty-dollar bills, and I think that might be important for people to know about.
Yes, yes, be aware that somebody has been out there passing out counterfeit twenties.
They, they look off as perfect. The only way you can tell is it's all, they're all the same serial number. So if you got four of them, you'd see they were all the same serial number. But they, they're really, they really did a good job, but they only made one plate, so there's only one serial.
And now, but they will catch them, you know, with the pens too, because they will.
Oh, at the casino?
Yeah, oh, at the casino, yeah. Well, I wouldn't have. I've heard, I've heard that they have pens that they use.
Yeah, they actually pulled it out.
I'll ask Jody, Jody, do they?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I got you, I.
No, they, they actually did that, and it's a counterfeit bill. State police actually came to talk to that guy.
Oh, that's the other, the way you could tell, because they don't use the best paper, and it's not the normal US government paper that it's printed on. So that, you know, it'll pick up the ink roll quick and.
Highly. Yeah, they're what there's supposed to be, uh, light.
Strip in there.
But who, yeah, who looks at that, you know? You hand it to somebody, they do the pen thing, and they call the police. That's it. Engineering report.
Happy July fourth, everybody.
Yeah, you too.
How old is this slider tank?
Uh, it's nineteen eighty-seven, I think. Could be wrong. Wait. Eighty-seven, nineteen seventy-seven, seventeen. It's like thirty-some years old.
And what's the life expectancy of that tank?
Well, the problem is the inside is corroded. We, I mean, the choice is to either paint the inside or replace it.
How did the inside come corroded?
It's old.
It's old.
And what about maintenance? What type of upkeep and maintenance should be done to prevent that?
Not sure. Well.
Does it get prevented?
The one we're getting is, is going to be kind of, it's, it's, I'm gonna say it's glass lined, but it's, I'm not sure that the material, it's actually glass. But the lining is corrode, is resistant to corrosion. So the next one will last seventy-five years, maybe longer.
So wasn't maintenance and upkeep to keep it from?
There really isn't maintenance and upkeep on a tank. I mean, you don't empty it and clean it. I mean, there's sediment and stuff that you would flush it every once in a while. But it's not any, there's nothing you could do to increase the life of the tank itself. The lining coming from the manufacturer is the way you get a longer lasting tank.
And this tank is still in use right now, but being monitored?
I thought they took it down.
I think, I think it is offline right now.
It's on? Not for monitoring it? I thought they were still use.
No, Donnie's not here.
No, I think he's looking for it. I thought, I thought that they took it offline. Matter of fact, I thought they were talking about it. They've been taking it down already.
But it's not down, right?
No, it's not down yet.
Yeah.
I, I remember the first, the first time we discussed it, and we went through the figures. It would have been so cost prohibitive to empty it, and as it sat there waiting to be refurbished, and it can only be refurbished for so long. It would probably have to be sandblasted, then a special paint repainted the, the entire inside of it. It was just so cost prohibitive, knowing that this was gonna happen again in another five to ten years. We, we were better off to just put up something else permit, and we knew, like Andy said, it was gonna last seventy-five years.
But isn't the new tank like over three million dollars?
And it was gonna be close to a million dollars just to redo the, that tank.
But a million.
To last another five years.
Five years is all it would last?
Right. We did a cost benefit analysis.
Yeah, it was just not conducive to keep doing that every seventy years. You know, we do have hard water down here. It's tough.
I believe there might be other issues with the tank also in regard to, since the new tank was built in Corpointe, there's elevation difference, which puts our water system on two different pressure zones. The new tank will not only take care of this fan and steam, but it's also going to compensate for that elevation, and if everything would be the same, therefore, it would all be the same zone. So they wouldn't have to monitor separately what's going on in this part of town versus this part of town.
Wade, do you know, would that require the restrictor valves in different areas of the? I, I call it a restrictor valve. I think.
It's just a pressure.
Pressure reducer valve in different areas.
That would depend on any modeling that would be done by the engineer on what those pressures would be with that elevation change.
Okay. But the engineer will know that. I know I had that problem.
Yeah, I think, I think the safe answer is I don't think the pressure is going to change for you. It's just going to be.
How about for other areas of the town? Ray, you had the same problem, because I got you one of the pressure valves to, to put in. Because yours, during the water line change, it stirred up a lot of stuff. Mine got gummed up, yours got gummed up. I couldn't brush my teeth, and, you know, while my wife was taking a shower. Well, I could, but she was awfully cold. So I think, I was wondering if that would be a situation that would.
I don't, I don't think it's gonna change the pressure.
That's great. That's good.
Will be more consistent. Any other questions on engineering report? Okay. Water. I have a note on the water system. York Water has been contacted. They're reviewing internally and will provide feedback as to their stance on amending the agreement. We contacted Mark Wheeler. He's their legal and operations person. So that's who we're dealing with now to, about the York County water feed.
That was, that was a high fee. I saw that in a treasurer's report.
What were you paying?
Thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand dollars. That's our, that's still a lot of money. That's something else.
I know, I know. We're paying, we're paying for a certain amount of water every month.
You're right, we get the water.
Well, we use it.
We don't need it. We are taking the water, but we really don't need it. So it is a, you know, it's basically, it's a drought insurance policy. So if we can leave the connection intact, but not, not use the water, then.
Not contract.
Not contract for the water, right? And there's probably gonna, there could be a small fee for, you know, maybe only five thousand dollars of order to have a hookup fee, which would be still a savings, so. Any questions on water or lease water? We did hire a new employee for the wastewater treatment plant. Replaced Duckmire, right? Her name was. Oh, Nick Thompson. Okay, sorry.
So this new person replaced.
Some of his retired.
Dave. Is that what you said?
Dave Thompson.
Dave Thompson. And what was that position?
It was the, one of the wastewater treatment plant employees. And he does have licenses and CDO, so it was a good hire.
Like the helper to John, or kind of assistant to John, or?
It's just one of the regular employees that will help manage the plant. We have four.
Total of four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, zoning and code enforcement.
Did you have to read over?
I can. Yeah, that's, no names.
There were two of. Six building permits issued, two zoning permits issued, and two commercial building permits issued for November May. As for water system permits, connection permits, there was one of those. For cemetery sewer, there were three issued, two of which were the development in the township, not actually in the borough. Code enforcement. The first one, the business park, this stops Tuesday for the first one, April fifth. Meeting held in the prosecutor's. Since that meeting, I have received drawings and a map, actually giving correction, proper addresses for all of the buildings in the business park. And they have submitted the paperwork for the building permit that was, that is required for the repair that is being made. For the second one, Mr. Tooney, Mr. Schaefer speaking with him. I'm not sure of the outcome of that. Brenda Tanner.
With the last meeting, it was talked about filing and going forward.
He's still cleaning. I mean, he has. He's still cleaning, I mean, he has, actually, Wade, he has, most of the tractors are on a trailer now, they're listed on Facebook for sale, and he's, he's making progress. The magistrate's not going to do anything if he is showing good intent and getting rid of, he's continuing to get rid of things.
Has he gotten rid of any of those mowers?
They're all in a trailer right now, so I don't know if they're sitting out front.
On the trail.
On the trail.
Are there any other vehicles on the property that are supposed to be in enclosed storage that aren't? It was my understanding that there was still one that was in the back of the property, illegally, that is supposed to be in enclosed storage. And I don't see anything, want to hear about any of, any of the vehicles.
The only thing that would have to be in enclosed storage is if he had it apart.
Wasn't that one on the side? No, there was two on the side.
Yeah, the Mercedes. Doesn't have tags on it, let's put it that way.
Said he's been speaking with Mr. Schaefer, as far as I know, he's, he's bringing, he brought vehicles down, all vehicles he brought down, he drove down here, tagged.
Yeah, that was a lot of, he didn't bring that one down, then.
Like I said, I don't know where they came from.
I'll, when Andrew gets back, I'll-
As for the next one, Brenda Tanner, there's two of them on that.
Dr. Hughes, Dr. Hughes' names?
Use the address.
Sorry.
That's okay.
McCurley Drive, both of those, I did file with the district magistrate's office. I still have not heard anything back from the district magistrate's office, but I have something to do with them trying to track down a valid address for the person, since word, my notice has came back undeliverable, I'm not sure.
So did the person never reply from the March notice letter that was sent? You've never heard anything?
Nope, I didn't hear anything, I filed with the district.
Is that the McCurley Drive?
Yes.
So after a certain amount of time, they were, by statute, allowed to remove that vehicle, correct? Will we do that?
Yeah, I would say depends on, on the ordinance, what the ordinance says, if we can, we can.
We did it on Oxford.
Well, it says compliance date is four twenty-nine, so that's-
Yeah, but if, yeah, that's, that's done, so.
That there was a criminal complaint filed by magistrate?
Either way, we, even if we do, we still, it's still gonna go through the district magistrate at this point.
Was that due to a complaint?
Yes.
And I would think that we should take it seriously and tow that vehicle, and then we have to pay, take it out of storage, plus the fine.
And I see six.
We should probably follow up on these like once a month, where we have, you know, where we actually, I wouldn't even be opposed to sending a letter out once a month saying, please remember, you have until.
Well, I think, I think we do, we do it ten day, and then it's-
Yeah, we do.
Several notices have to take place before we can take action, and I know on Oxford Court, that's what we did, and then we ended up towing that vehicle, and if he wanted it back, he had to pay for stor- or the, the storage, towing, and pay the, the fine.
All these compliance due dates have all passed. That are open. I see six basketball courts structured right away, all of those were called in. Can there be somebody else?
Well, this one's closed.
Well, it's on here, so.
This one's closed.
Well, it's the structure right away, one, two, three, four, five.
Yes, these were closed.
The first two are closed.
Last one's closed.
Seven. Well, I know, but all, all these are being reported into the office? I mean, all of a sudden, I mean, basketball hoops? And I thought that you were going to be reactive, so that would tell me that seven people have called in for basketball hoops?
That's correct. If they're in the middle of the red, or Trump's gonna hit the, hit the hoop, scratch the car.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know.
Well, you've got pictures.
Yeah.
There are two on there that are structuring right away that have not been addressed until the end of March. It might have been addressed since then.
By the property owner, or being removed, or?
They were not being removed. They were not removed, but we had to go out, we started street sweeping, and in the process of going street sweeping, the public works department went out, and anything that was in the way, they pushed back onto the property, so we did not damage our equipment while we swept the streets.
I wanna reserve some time to talk about that street sweeping, if I can. The, the first one, the twenty East High Street, were they stopped from completing their construction at any time, or did we let them complete it and then file the notices? Because you can certainly see that from here, that they were doing that. Why didn't we stop them until we got their correct permit?
We let them weatherproof the building, in the meantime, it'd be like a tree hitting your roof, and you tell them you can't stop-
Did the wall fall down, or did they knock it down?
No, the wall, it was hit by a fork, and it was collapsed.
Mitigate the damages, if that term. Any other questions on code enforcement? I think we did need to, Windsor five twenty-eight, I guess we should be picking them up in
Do you wanna just mention that we had a meeting with recreation, lots of items, about some communication, ways to better organize ourselves, and some other stuff? So, the report from that, under the president's announcement, the meeting was held between, or held with Andy Bobby, Erica, myself, Andrew, Mary Ann, and Richard Garvey. The purpose of the meeting was to improve the relationship between the Recreation Commission and the Borough Council, who's decided that both groups should work towards opening lines of communication, so that we could move forward and have better, excuse me, a better working relationship with the office and everybody that's included to better serve the community. It's also decided that the Recreation is not responsible for raising funds for projects, the meeting went well, was productive. So, basically, if they're looking to do something like this pickleball project that we're talking about, there's obviously no way that the Recreation's gonna be able to come up with that amount of funds, so just to clear, clarify some of that. There was a punch list item that I did go over with Andrew last week, and I got answers to most of them, so I'll be giving that information back to them this week, because I was on vacation. Farmer's Market, from all appearances and conversations, Farmer's Market was a huge success. Market was held in conjunction with the Community Flea Market and the Rose Fire Company barbecue. It was reported that foot traffic was good, and a couple of vendors even sold out of many of their items. Did have a few vendors coming, coming back, I'm sorry, we did have a few vendors back out of the market due to the predicted weather for the day. There was approximately ten to twelve vendors signed up, and I think as everybody's probably seen now, the sign up by, between the community center and the firehouse will remain in place. I think Andrew has it scheduled to change the date of the Farmer's Market, to change, I think, the, the Sunday following. And they also did mention that they, they are now doing the market every Saturday, whereas before, they had advertised it as doing it twice a month. I think that was some of the feedback that they had gotten from some of the vendors, that they'd like to keep that consistent, have it every single Saturday of the month. So there's a, a change from before.
They'd probably get better attendance, because then they'd be, they would know-
Yeah, I think that's, like I said, from some of the feedback from the vendors who have some experience doing some of this stuff.
Excuse me, that sign still shows Farmer's Market, June eleventh, the one that's supposed to change, and I know Andrew's on vacation, so I don't know if somebody can change it, if they're gonna do it this Saturday, just saying.
Okay, I know he, he does have the ability to do it remotely with the system that was purchased.
I mean, when I came down tonight, it said the eleventh, so.
Yeah, that's, that's what I should say.
That was, that was the suggestion that I-
Or just Saturdays, whatever the hours are, ten to one.
And that makes it easier, too.
That's, that's what I suggested, to Andrew.
Since it's every week now. Really, that's a good thing.
All right, so we covered that. Tennis, tennis program started on May thirty-first, there are twenty participants, and more are participating in the future. The gross income was one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. There is one, one assistant, Emily Goodfellow, and one parent, who will be assisting as needed, and clearances for both individuals have been filed with the borough. Adult tennis program will start on July fourth, and it'll be every Saturday, nine, I'm sorry?
June fourth.
I'm sorry, June fourth. And it'll run every Saturday from nine until ten, until the weather, weather does not allow us to continue. Pickleball continues to be a success. The parade, registrations have been mailed out for parade registrations, so if anybody is interested, they can contact the borough office here and get signed up. Andy Bobby spoke with VFW and secured the color guard. Everyone on recreation is needed to assist. The parade will be held, excuse me, on July ninth, starting at four thirty PM, and Kim Butcher will be serving as the grand marshal this year.
You get to ride in a Florida son?
Yeah, on the back of sixty-five Cabaret.
Uh-oh.
Skiing with his thirty.
Yeah. Tell them no burnouts on the way. Concerts in the park, Marion is in the process of mailing out the sponsorship flyer and cover letter. Garvey reported that there will be two vendors available for the concert. Gil Heiss is not available for the first concert, and they're trying to contact Bonkies as a possibility to replace them for the first one. Permission was given to Rect for the use of the cook facilities down there, so they'll be selling hot dogs, hamburgers, and some other items. Veterans Day, the community center has been reserved for November tenth, and the doors are gonna be open at five PM. Children and teens, there's nothing to report, and parks, nothing new, but we will be following up with the, the other items from the meeting earlier. That is all.
Ryan, do you have dates of the concerts?
Uh, not that was listed on here, they were on a previous, actually, it may be-
I have them. The first Saturday-
The first Saturday in the park is August thirteenth.
They'll start at five, and then the music, I guess, so forth, will start six to eight. September, it is, Saturday in the park is the seventeenth.
Yeah, and the third one, I think they were, still haven't scheduled, I'm not sure.
October fifteenth is a Saturday in the park, and they were discussing maybe having that as a karaoke night, the sign up.
I'm sorry, when was the second week? I thought I had that in, September?
Same day as Freedom Fest, September seventeenth. September seventeenth.
I also looked at photos on there.
Okay, anything from business development?
Will you skip over three?
What I, what I skipped over?
I apologize.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, consider establishing an interim monthly rate of two hundred dollars for utilization of the community centered by the Recreation Commission. That would, that would be a monthly rate of covered tennis, pickleball, whatever else they decided to do.
That would just be a fee through the end of the year to be revisited?
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then we revisit it after we look at all the leases.
We've got a problem up at the community center, again, still, I think you're aware, we today think the temperature in the community center, while they were playing pickleball, was somewhere in the forties. The air conditioning was blowing full blast. Thank you for going up and at least hitting the breaker to turn that off, but apparently we've got some, do we have some major problems up there with that HVAC?
We have a communication issue that the units are not communicating with the computer. Your typical HVAC person is not going to be able to do anything for it, you can't log into it, we need a computer, we need a programmer that can go into the actual program that runs the HVAC system, who's scheduled to come down tomorrow.
What happened that that's not working? Because Kim Hernandez told us at one point, she said, oh yeah, I can go change the temperature. Is it on her computer in her office, Tasteful Cations office?
It's on a dedicated computer in the center room of the community center.
Which means she has access to it then, and can, because she's basically kind of in charge of taking care of the community center, correct?
She can access-
Cleaning and everything, she takes care of that, showing people the different rooms that they can rent, that's her, her job. But she said, you know, all you have to do is let me know, I can get on the computer and change it, I don't-
But there's a problem with the software right now, so that'll be on that tomorrow.
Hardware has been taken care of, right? I know we had some problems because of COVID stuff wasn't running, things got running again, and of course, after sitting all that time, it, it didn't work properly, and I think we had some folks come in and fix all that, correct?
All I know is it's a communication error, there's two different computers, you have the dedicated computer that runs in-
In general, it's in good shape other than that.
As far as, yeah, it's everything else functions mechanically, it just, it does not, there's a programming problem.
Is it gonna be left off now, so we're not paying for forty degree weather in there until it's fixed?
It's earned a great role.
But it's gonna stay on?
Now it'll be ninety-eight.
Hopefully, the junk will fix it tomorrow, and it'll be all done.
They need to bring someone in to- They need to bring, they need to bring someone in that can actually note, there's two different programs, there's your computer, but then the system itself has its own computer and program, it's called. And it is someone that can program that portion of the computer. It can't just be like a one-page program or anything. This gentleman, this is a specific program for that unit. You have to bring someone in to find it, to be able to try to figure out what's wrong with it.
How old is that system?
Oh, it's been placed, it would have been placed in service when the renovations were done at the community center.
It's not here.
And what type of, uh, maintenance does that get yearly?
Uh, filters, cooling towers get cleaned out, uh, there's several things that are done. There's screens in the crown wood pole, there's boilers that are inspected twice a year. There's a lot of components involved. It's not like an air conditioner, it's not like a heat, the air at your house, this is more like a geothermal cooling tower and everything runs together.
But before our season rolls around, does it get a, a maintenance checkup every year?
Filters get changed more than that.
This is a software glitch, it's, it shouldn't have happened, but it did, so it just needs to be fixed.
And that just happens to be from a computer, from electrical spike or?
Do we have any warranty system underneath this then?
Probably not at this point, it's probably expired by now.
Okay.
I know that was discussed, that we get a company that'll come in and go over it every six months. I talked to Andrew about that and I think he's in the process of trying to do some things like that that hadn't been done before.
The long buildings looked at?
On a regular basis, a man, a regular maintenance contract, because we never had that before. If it won't, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, but you gotta have regular maintenance done, other than changing the filters.
Everything will be on planned maintenance though?
Yep.
Do we wanna print out of that once it happens?
Sure.
Okay, just see if it's got started, good.
Do we want to establish the, the rec fee for the community center? I mean, Andy seemed to think that was fair. It seems to combine tennis and pickleball, then they only have to pay, it's just a flat rate.
Yep.
I think rec is in agreement, so I would entertain a motion.
Should we take it back? Did you specifically bring up the two hundred dollars to rec?
No, no, but he said that that, that that would be, that they were, he seemed, she, he said that they seemed happy because it would just be a flat rate and they wouldn't have to worry about it for months.
Okay, so if it?
Asked that in the meeting.
I don't know that he.
Asked that in our meeting what they wanted.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, whether, whether conversation or anything that had happened before or after the meeting that we had. So if, if they are on board with it, then make a motion, we have a two hundred dollar, uh, monthly fee for rec for the use of the community center?
Starting June, this month.
Yeah, starting this month.
Second half.
Any other discussion?
I just have a question, because in the report, it says that they pay three fifteen.
Yes.
So they're gonna be getting a, a large reduction?
They're, yeah, it, it's gonna be an interim fee, all of the rates are gonna be looked at over the next few months and then we'll establish rates for each, each, uh, use in the community center.
They were only getting, keep like forty-five dollars because of that fee. So we thought we would come up just with an interim fee while everything's figured out over the next couple of months with contracts.
During cleaning. I'm sorry?
So the motion should say that it's just through this year?
Yes, it's through, the, the, uh, motion is through the end of the year, yes.
And be revisited.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Right, those is aye. And again, in the minutes, it should say it's only through the end of twenty twenty-two. Okay, um, you showed me this, um.
That's just for you now, I just, I just say afternoon, I haven't even had the chance to read it. So let's digest that and then we have another EMS.
This is my continent.
Yeah, I wanted you to have that. And I'll give a copy of that to Anne also.
Okay, what, what we're looking at is, um, EMS had, um, the opportunity to use a chase truck. It's actually a, a chase vehicle, I would call it a truck. It was way less expensive than the chase vehicles we talked about a year ago. Uh, even with the outfitting and the, uh, equipment, it looks like it would be way less expensive. So, um, this would be something, it's, basically they used a Chevy Suburban from Glen Rock on a loan basis and then this would be them buying a vehicle to use as a chase truck. And what a chase truck does is it frees up your paramedic so that if a, if a paramedic would go along with a transport to GBMC, for instance, for a road accident, then the paramedic could come back in the chase truck and while they stay with the A O, while the EMS people stay with the, um, with the ambulance until the person gets admitted. So it's gonna save money for Rose Fire, for, for Rose EMS, it's, I, I think it's a really good idea in the long run. Um, and it would have to be some cost sharing, obviously, between Shrewsbury Township and Shrewsbury Borough in New Freedom.
For the three to four months that we used Glen Rock's truck, um, it, it really was beneficial because it, they had enough equipment up there, they could fully equip that chase truck with everything they needed that would normally just about be in an ambulance other than, uh, a litter. The electric litter, that, you know, that thing's huge.
It's not used to transport a patient, it's used to provide services to the patient.
Our BLS or ALS unit is out, somebody has a cardiac arrest here, we have a paramedic that can be there, that can start pushing meds, um, it's, it's a great benefit. Um, I mean, I, I didn't, I usually don't give this out, but I have a list if anybody on council is interested on how many calls, what we used, whether it was ALS, BLS, chase truck. Um, in, uh, last month, um, we had, I knew there's a number of calls. We had total billable calls, seventy-two, ALS twenty-nine, BLS was forty-three. New Freedom had thirteen calls out of all of them. We had the lowest number of any municipality, yet it's our EMS, paid EMS. Uh, Shrewsbury Township always has the highest, they had fifty-three out of all the calls.
So good job, New Freedom.
Good Freedom does an excellent job, does an excellent job.
And you were saying that that, if you got like a suburban or something like that, that would be significantly less than what we were being?
Yeah, we were looking at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars and this would be in the neighborhood of sixty, you know, and then staff.
Yeah, sixty couple.
Yeah, so really it's, it's, I really think it's something that council could get behind and help support. And again, it would be a third of that or some, or, actually, if you go by the percents of our calls, it would be seventeen percent of that cost to us and the other municipalities would pay their share proportionately.
Right, that's a large difference.
Yeah, it's a huge difference.
Yeah. So we have to put this on the next month's agenda then?
Well, yeah, I think so, 'cause, I mean, we just got this, we just got a copy.
And they've got two vehicles, I think, on there in mind, so if we can. I'll, if I can get back to them, um, well, maybe it's gonna take place before ours, but I'll let them know that it's under consideration.
Yeah.
We'll take it back to the EMS.
Sorry, Gordon.
What vehicles do they have in mind?
One more time?
Sorry, what vehicles do they have in mind?
Uh, it's actually a truck, it's a, um, they're looking at the, um, a twenty-twenty Chevy Silverado with a closed back, so it'd be a four-passenger and a closed back that they would outfit with the, um, with the brackets and stuff that would be needed for the command gear. And the other one would be a twenty-twenty Ford Explorer. Uh, that's not a new, new, new vehicle, it's a twenty-eight thousand miles on the odometer.
And I think that's a chief's truck.
Yeah, that would be for the fire, or for the EMS chief, so, yeah. So it's substantially different than getting a specialized vehicle.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, did we, did, was there other discussion about EMS and fire funding?
No, I'm sure that they're gonna be approaching us though prior to our, um, budget season.
Really needs to have a decision.
I have asked them to please put their wishes together, I was at their meeting last Thursday. They expressed how important it is to, that they not wait until October to, to come to us. Um, and we'll have to make a decision whether we wanna implement an EMS tax again or whether we want to just go with a donation. Shrewsbury goes with a donation, I'm trying to put every community together, municipality. And what they currently in twenty twenty-two have agreed to donate to EMS and fire because we're really getting into a bad situation with the equipment on the fireside too. And two years ago, a new ladder truck was one point three million. They're up over two million right now and you probably don't wait a year to get it. So we've got some, that, we and they have some decisions to make. Going back to you, hopefully, I think it was in the report, um, I did ask them to please, um, do the hamburgers and hot dogs on a weekly basis. Some of the younger guys are probably gonna pull out grills for the farmer's market and they will use that as a fundraiser and it'll also help, uh, help keep people there and give them a little something else to, you know, the one week is, is the chicken bar, between the last week of the month where they have the beef and the turkey and all that stuff. But the, uh, rec asked that, uh, perhaps they could do something else on the off Saturdays, so. Lock on wood, we'll have some guys there doing hamburgers, hot dogs and so on. Yeah, knock on the end.
Um, okay, uh, infrastructure, um, Erica, um, had some excellent input on, uh, PMS for buildings and structures and mechanical systems. We already do PMS on all of our, uh, trucks, all of our equipment in Public Works. Uh, obviously, we do PMS on all of our equipment and in the wastewater treatment plant and on the water treat, water treatment plant side. Uh, but this is talking about just buildings and structures specifically and mechanical systems. So that's in the process of being put together. Other infrastructure that we're doing, I think is, I think it's progressing nicely, so. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay, uh, Erica or Kim that are governmental?
Um, I attended all the regular meetings, Glen Rock, Stewartstown, Shrewsbury, all's went well, Kim attended the Stewartstown. Uh, Kim and I also attended the Marjorie Goodfellow tree dedication with Julie Wheeler and, uh, Sweeney and others. That was very nice little, um, by the Lions Club. And I also attended the VFW Memorial Day Ceremony at Veterans Park and, uh, that was a, a nice, nice ceremony there as well.
I think Stewartstown used our street sweeper, am I correct? Did that happen? Cause I know it was down for some repairs. Did that go out to Stewartstown or no?
I know Donna was talking about that they had reached an agreement.
Yeah, they reached an agreement, I didn't know, I know, I know I asked and it had been under. But I, can I talk about street sweeping under infrastructure?
Um, sure.
Or put it someplace else? I'm really a little disappointed, for thirty years, we've done the same thing with street sweeping, it's worked out very well. See what people here may think, I know the community is used to us doing one side of the street one day, the other side of the street the next day, and we've always put, posted, no parking this day, okay, for street sweeping. It's my understanding, we're not gonna notify people that we're doing street sweeping. It's either, you know, you know it, you move your car, or you don't know it, you don't, we sweep around it. I don't think that's right, I think these streets need to be swept, kept nice, pristine. Uh, and the only way we're gonna do that is the way we've done it for the last thirty years. Do one side of the street, put the signs up, no parking this day, the next day, go down the other side. We always did east, east side one day and west side another day. And that way we can all swap. You guys talking about cars up on where you are. One day you move them on one, you move them on one side, the next day they're on the other side. You got a nice, clean street, no sinners, no junk, some.
As long as we know about it.
That's, that's the key, we have to let people know about it and I would like to.
Will we put in a savvy citizen?
No, because not everybody has savvy citizen, not everybody can get on the website.
Well, how would help people then?
We, we always put signs on the telephone poles or stick a, stick a sign in the yard, you know? We've got Public Works guys now that aren't mowing grass, I would hope they have some extra time to be able to do this for a couple of days, you know, and, and let people know it's coming. Because I'm tired of, you know, my neighbor never moves her, her car and they sweep around it and then when they go around hers, they miss half of mine and I've got my car in the backyard, you know, so they can sweep. We need to let people know.
Yeah.
Well, I think if, if this is something that we did, uh, once a month, once every other week, it would be a different situation. We do this once a year, I think it's important that one time a year to get it done good.
And I will say another thing, I think on Bailey is the area that we have the Cadillac situation, am I right? That has not been swept in fourteen years. So we put the sign up, if he doesn't move it, ticket him or tow the vehicle so we can. I can't imagine what this street would turn into in fourteen years. Well, in Washington, in Washington's the same way.
It's not just those, wherever it is.
You know, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm tired of excuses, either find him, tow him, make him move another day and charge him extra because the street sweeper has to come back. We owe that to keep a good, clean town.
I don't have any problem with that, I'll talk to Andrew about it. Thank you. Okay. Pickleball court installation.
Um, nothing specifically, uh. Specifically new, um, he still hasn't gotten any information back from the, um, Borough Engineer. Um, but I, as mentioned earlier, it will be, um, kinda encompassed into the whole park project. So that will delay things to a certain degree.
Well, we're probably looking at, not this year, but next year, before we get.
Yeah.
Okay. Personnel, I already talked about the new hire at the waste treatment plant. Public safety. We've already discussed the bus.
Is that a public safety committee?
We do, I'd have to look to see who's on it even, I think Dennis and Burnell are lead, is it, I don't know. I think you're on it, uh.
Oh, I think public safety, I don't know.
Yeah, but we've already pretty much assessed the traffic signs, the calming signs, the, uh, safety, uh, speed bumps, just for when hate. They probably don't need necessary, I just.
They are not what you're thinking of where you've gotta stop, go over it, or you're gonna, they're. gonna, they're rubber and they're more like a mat. They're very gradual.
Those are like a jump, the ones they had in Shrewsbury.
Yeah.
They were brutal.
Well, that's exactly what, what we're looking at.
At two miles an hour, they're brutal.
You're supposed to be able to hit those at fifteen to twenty miles an hour without...
Um, I guess the law is under public safety. There has been some drug activity at the park lately, and it's not necessarily at night. Um, do the lights, the lights did one all night?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I have brought it up to date before, cause I, I have seen him walk his dog at dusk when there's gaggle of children. Um, but my friend was there on a Friday during the day, the park was packed and, like, people were smoking pot and stuff, so obviously I told just all the police, but there's been exchanging of stuff happening.
With the beep shot, it's here.
Yeah, more so like kind of recently.
One of the problems nowadays is we have, and I, I looked into this because of a situation with stopping cars, and an officer smells marijuana. They are not even allowed to ask them if they, to produce a medical marijuana card. Tell me why? Even though they smell marijuana, you know, they can't do anything. Their hands are being tied with somebody's...
It would seem to me like that could be a driving while intoxicated.
Right, right.
Well, you have, you can't, but if they say they're medical marijuana, "I smoked it in the house and, um, now I'm in the car."
But if you, but if you have a medical marijuana card and you smoke marijuana in the house, and then you get behind the wheel of a car and you, and you've just smoked your medic marijuana, that's, that's a violation.
But there's no breathalyzer for marijuana.
Shouldn't the park with children be a drug-free zone regardless?
It is.
Yeah, yeah. Regardless, like it's different on a car, but like children, impressionable kids, like, you know, it just shouldn't happen at all regardless whether you have a card or not. Like, it should be...
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the whole war on drugs thing.
Exactly, yeah.
Wasn't that why some, the, part of the reason the cameras were installed?
Yep.
Can you take us back to Chief, Kim?
Yes, I definitely will, because I have a couple other things.
The other thing, too, I mean, the chief has access to the cameras full-time, so...
Is this happening in the parking lot or actually...
I mean, she said like there were just like high school age kids, maybe a little older, at the one, like picnic table area at the actual park. And like, the parents are all solid, nobody, I guess, had the guts to say something.
The only picnic table there is over by the big pine tree, and that's, you, I don't think you can see that with...
There's, there's a group of about ten kids that, I call them hellions, that get on, get on, on their bicycles and they frequent from the rudders to the park, and they're probably who it is because they do it at rudders, they do it, do it through the alley where Weinhold's is, where the weld shop.
They do it at the basketball court.
And in front of Pisana's, cause they try to like make their car understand that.
It's, it's a group of about ten of them that's probably listening to us, probably who it is. It might be just something that you can tell the chief and he might go to monitor. I hate to stereotype people, but it is, there is a group. I see him, I'm at Bob's Weld Shop, you know, welding stuff all the time, and they ride right on through there, and then when I leave there and I come down and turn left, they're then at the park. So, it's probably that group.
I will make it a point to, to make an appointment with, uh, Chief this week.
I saw a dude on a bicycle selling drugs on the rail trail.
Probably same kid.
He had a mountain dude with a, he just drive around.
I'll, you know, I'll, I'll tell you what, I mean, I had this conversation way back whenever I first got on, in office with Chief, and if you see somebody exchanging something, you don't know if it's not stick of gum. You know, even if you saw someone carving up, you know, white powder on the picnic table, you don't know it's not powdered sugar and they just have a sweet tooth. I, the trouble is, is you have to have hard evidence, and it's so hard to get. You know, you almost have to have a surveillance van and you have to have, you know, just cause someone hands somebody something, someone else hands them money. I was paying him back the loan that he gave me the other day and he was giving me a bag of Oregano for Mom's pasta tonight, you know, so.
But if, if, I mean, that's a distinct smell, I've been told.
Well, and I just think like increase, I mean, cause I know that just being walking has deterred people, like, they get in their cars and leave, like, we can see them from my porch. So, like, if people walk their dogs and stuff, they are deterred even if it's not police.
Well, you, you and me both, you knew where I live, you know, I'm out on deck looking out over...
So, maybe just an increased presence, I mean, I know we can't control that.
I've had, I've had to get down because we've got a lot of new kids, I think, in town with Franklin Square, and I've been down there in the last month, three, four times because of skateboarders on the, uh, on the tennis courts.
Yeah, they were down there the other day when they were playing pickleball.
Yeah, were they?
We asked for the leave and they did.
Well, that's generally all it takes. Most of them are very polite, "Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't realize," you know, well, thank you.
I would, I would give almost anything to, before I die, to see a skate park of some small magnitude somewhere in the borough. It could even be out of Weathersfield where the kids can get to it, you know, and it would take all of that over there, and you wouldn't have that problem. And we have so little to do in this town, and that is one thing we have had.
Insurance.
Insurance.
That's where the problem is for them.
You know, other places have it. There's gotta be a way to do it.
There is, but you've gotta, it's, you gotta have enough money and you have to have an insurance agent, agency that will cover you for it. We've been told if we do it, they'll draw us.
Maybe, it may be worth talking to, uh, Cocke'sville down there next to the Target. That's free.
That's a very nice one.
And those kids are...
Send them down there.
Send them down there.
Let me see, that's downhill, they can run their skateboard to that.
I wonder how they do it, cause that's free and, and, I mean, those kids...
You have them everywhere, in Alamo, County. I mean, we need to give the kids something to do.
Alamo County's a lot different than...
But we've come to the Heritage Society and we meet there to go for elections and things like this. We come back, there's skateboarders all over the sidewalk where it's posted, no skateboarding, and they all came in very, very nice, much nicer than my car, to skateboard on our sidewalk.
Oh, you, that's right. They're all over the bricks down there, they're destroying the bricks.
It's not like they just skated down the street from their house. They all piled into SUVs and, and, you know, I'm sedans, and I'm like, "Why are they coming here?" Then they stole our sign, but hey, you know, after turning it around so they couldn't see that it said "No skateboarding," they just got tired and stole it.
Yeah.
That's another thing we need to bring out to Chief.
Give them some place that they could go, but then you're gonna, that's where your drug, drug deals are gonna move to, too, probably, so.
With a car, they can go to Cocke'sville.
Uh, Burnell didn't have anything on the Sasquatch, Sasquasentennial Committee. Uh, he's been pretty much tied up, uh, with Denise, so. Council Chamber audio and video improvements?
Um, I think it was on that committee and I wanted to try to get together. She has not been feeling well. I'm waiting for a quote to come back. Um, they needed to have pictures of Council Chamber, of our equipment, measurements of the room. Um, apparently they're really, they do, are sure that they can hook into our sound system, which is gonna save an awful lot. Uh, it may just require, I forget what they call it, uh, there's a box that this all ties into and it'll op, could operate off of one laptop.
Why don't you do that, what that is called?
Uh, it's...
Starts with an N.
Oh, is that blue one that you got?
Yeah, I think you can do that.
Well, it's kinda, but there's, there's another thing that all that hooks into so that we can, if we want to do Zoom, we could do presentations.
Like a question? When we'll get a quote?
I am hoping to have one within the next week.
Oh, it's like a...
And that includes two TVs, seventy-inch TVs, one facing Chamber, or Council, one facing the audience on that wall over there.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Did somebody say something?
I just said, like, a question. It's basically, it's a little display and then it gives you all the different options to switch between.
Yeah, that's a, if you say so.
Like a media curve.
Yeah, yeah, they have it. It's special made for it, and that, but that's basically what it is.
Okay, next, next meeting. Uh, we have another spot for public comment?
I got a quick one.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, a while ago, a year or so ago, maybe two years ago, the Boy Scouts came by for Eagle Scout Project and they were gonna build a little portable library.
Okay.
And they're gonna put it in Marjorie Goodfellow Park. Well, it's done, but, you know, they haven't been able to get it out there. Do we, do we want them to put it out, or is there a place we want them to put it?
How big is it?
I thought we could work with a spot, so.
It's down where those tree things, I think that's where it was originally gonna be, you know, where all those little poles are where the new trees are being planted.
Yeah.
Cause the guy that built it, he and his son asked me, you know, what, what's our plan, and I said, "I don't, I don't know yet," so.
I thought somebody went down in that with him.
Well, it's, it's livable, right?
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like you're stuck in the ground.
So, if you put it, um...
Well, then, oh, it, it doesn't stick in the ground?
No, it's just like the one over by the, uh...
I thought that was...
The cafe, there's gonna be another, there'll be two.
Four by four with a thing about going.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, to me, it would make sense to put it near where the little sidewalk thing.
I would think, too.
Yeah, why don't we go for that and we could always, you know, move it if it's, if it's a problem, we can get Public Works to adjust it if it needs to be adjusted.
Hopefully.
And we already approved putting it.
Yeah, and it's all done. The guy said, "Okay."
I was saying, "Go ahead, he already has permissions."
And we have a bookstore, we have a new bookstore in town that's helping to load the other one up, so he might get them tied in.
Oh, cool.
What about if we put it over by the tennis courts? Or by the fence, because that way, you know, it's lit at night.
That's not a bad thought, but then...
You know how kids are, they take a baseball back to that thing and you got books everywhere and it's...
Less, uh, less traffic, traffic.
And you've got a camera right there. If, I don't know, you know, kids just like to kick stuff over, just like the porta-pot last year, they took that.
You're just upset cause you were in it.
Well, you didn't have to put up with it for a week.
I'm glad you got out.
Me, too. At least it went over on the side, not where the door was.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I'm not sure he, you know, they probably, why don't, why don't you ask them to, Andrew, a call next week?
I'll talk to them, have them call out.
And figure out the best spot to put it. I mean, it has to be level, it should have some foot traffic. I don't know, putting it...
Safe?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the one over there is not bothered. I mean, putting it close to the trail might be better than, you know, like away from the tennis courts, cause they all congregate over there. Put it over there, they might not, they might not even pay the attention to it.
There is a street pole light over there somewhere, but I think it's fairly close to the rail trail.
Yeah.
Well, you call your office and then be clear.
Yeah, I mean, work out and then, you know, should be able to work it out, okay. Any other?
I had a, going back to, I probably should have been here a few meetings ago.
I'm sorry?
I probably should have been here a few meetings ago to ask this, but you guys talked in the expenses and about the transparent, talking about a, a new vehicle for the, the borough for transportation. What is the, like, what's the antenna of use for it?
Well, we have people that go to trainings, uh, we have people go to water trainings all the time, and it was just, you know, we, we would be responsible for their liability if they had an accident in their own car, so we just said we were gonna get a vehicle for, to be used to run, you know, run plans here, to kind of take, deliver things in between buildings or whatever.
Would it, would it be, like, with the cost of things right now, I mean, vehicles are going at a premium and fuel prices, would it be smarter just to pay the...
We already have it, so...
Oh, you already have it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was just thinking, like, you know, I, I worked for a lot of companies and we had a per diem, you know, or per mile thing, and it's like, I think prices are just crazy right now.
I think right now, per di, per mile is six, isn't it sixty, sixty cents a mile?
Yeah, that's what I was asking, how many miles it's being driven because...
Sixty-two cents.
It's like, it's like sixty-two cents.
By the way, you aren't getting a bill for my expenses to travel to Hershey, I'd be eating that.
I, I didn't, I didn't know if it was just like driving around this town, cause I'm like, it's only so big to have a whole vehicle. I was just curious.
Well, it's amazing how many miles, I mean, we, the wastewater treatment plant, if one of the guys has to go out and just check, um, what the water meters, there's a problem with a water meter and he's just gotta read a meter, you know, through a little bit of equipment. Sometimes people will have a leak, and they can take that, the equipment in the back of that instead of putting it in a diesel truck that's getting four miles to the gallon and go up there and put that to the ground and they can tell whether somebody's got a leak. It's amazing how much Public Works does travel, not just for training, yeah.
That's why I asked how much travel and the tenure, how much it's gonna be used.
Yeah, it's not fair to ask them to use their equ, their own equipment to do a lot of that.
Yeah. Hey, no, probably not New Freedom, but you guys might know where to go with this. The road by the high school going towards, uh, the two underpasses?
Mm-hmm. That's not New Freedom.
I, I understand. Um...
Just wanted to make that clear.
No, no, I, the mirror for one of them, you can't see in the other direction.
Oh, yeah.
Trying to see traffic, it's broke or turned off or, I don't know, it's shattered.
Yeah.
That's the eight-hundred-and-seventy-fifth one that's been there, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I try to...
The favorite place, it is broken.
Yeah, every time you place it, somebody shoots it out or throws a dog or...
Really?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, who'd like to hunt it?
Yeah.
Huh? Shrewsbury. I think Shrewsbury.
That would be, I think that would be Shrewsbury, uh, Shrewsbury Township.
But it, but it's probably a Glen Rock address or something.
Well, it is crazy.
Probably Glen Rock zip code, but it's a Shrewsbury Township.
Okay.
I think it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Everybody have anything else? Go ahead.
I'm over to you.
Oh, that's a good question. I like that question.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we are done.
Second.
Second.
Third.
Hi.
Hi.
Jer, jerk.
Oh, anybody, please remember tomorrow, the Lions has a blood drive at the community center.
Yeah, you gotta get on it.
We need to, you know, if you can possibly, please go and, and donate, um, as I said, it's community center tomorrow.
I tossed that question. Um, that's the election, and nobody's told him about it, so, but he's gonna call.